Down in here.
And I'm getting these fifteen leads in, calling me and daughter and shut up the fledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. It's time we'll look on the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda that includes minutes from December second. Counts payable, orders report, permit report, and the trade report.
Play the motion. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Everybody good with the counts payable? Hearing the others in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. With your licenses.
Sorry.
No, you're good.
Okay, sorry.
Okay. Public comment, any ones from the public who can speak?
You can go ahead.
Go ahead, buddy. Get it to your knee, please.
My name is Rick Honeycutt, and I'm the local veteran in Florida River Center for Iowa Works. I handle the western third of Iowa. And I'm here to possibly give good news to the county, considering home base Iowa. The county becoming a home base Iowa county, one of twelve in the state that's not participating in the program. However, because Glenwood as a city has home base Iowa as a community, it has some county incentives in there. They can piggyback off of the Glenwood community because it has Mills County YMCA, and also the Mills County Welcome. So all we would have to do is county is resubmit the resolution that's already been done and then sort of fizzled out the pass. And then go for the Glenwood County incentives and the state incentives and go forward with becoming a home base Iowa community. We have twelve hundred veterans in the county, which brings in one point three million dollars monthly in donated benefits. I think it's a good program to go forward with. If I can get on the agenda for another day if I need to, once the county can go ahead and just go forward with the resolution.
Can you write down your email address?
Give you a part of it.
Perfect, and then I will get in touch with you. I'll be gone after this week, but then how about the first of January, I'll reach out to you and we'll move forward with this.
Okay.
Okay.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. What do you got, Bonnie?
A couple things here. One of them might fall underneath the sheriff, and I don't know if I'm, you know, should be doing this, but I'm gonna try. There was an employee that I know. There was an employee that works for the county that has not gotten a raise for a while. I don't know if this is gonna be brought up anywhere else. I don't see it. But I think this person's been here over twenty-five years, probably hasn't been asked for much. And I thought maybe you ought to consider maybe if it's brought up. I don't see that person here, and I don't know if it's under the sheriff's budget or his discretion.
Someone's worked here for twenty-five years with no raise?
Huh?
Someone's worked here for twenty-five years with no raise?
Well, I think she's had some, but not like, it seems like anytime I've been in a meeting or I've read the paper, anybody asks for a raise, they just get nuts. That's just my opinion. And another thing, I heard a rumor that the landfill area was all sold.
Landfill area, what do you mean by that, Bonnie?
Out there at the landfill.
The...
The whole area, wherever, how many acres it adds or...
Yeah, it was sold. I mean, that would have, when would the landfill have bought that? Because they got their, they got their conditional use permit to use that property.
So has that always been that way?
That was done recently where they bought that extra land.
About three years ago when they acquired the land to the east, or maybe four or five even, I'm not sure.
So they own the whole thing, the county doesn't?
We don't own anything. We don't own anything.
Well, then we're late finding this out. I must not have read something. Anyway, and the square looks beautiful around the courthouse. I want to tell you.
We let them use it, but we don't, I would think, sharp blades in the chamber, Glenwood Betterment, and everyone else that was involved.
Well, I just want you guys to know that it's really, really something.
It did look nice.
Because I was there Friday night when they lit it all up to start with, but it's beautiful every night.
It was very pretty when they went on.
Yeah.
And I, I think it's wonderful what we have.
They had a great crowd of people.
Yes, I, we had cookies and craft at the center, and we had over twenty kids with their parents. We did well.
Good. Good, good.
I'm done.
Thank you.
Three more?
No, not unless you're gonna give me a raise.
You can give me one. Right after you give me my Christmas present.
Oh, I'm done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, I had a short week last week, so I don't think I had any meetings other than I come working. Sayers?
Last week, Monday through Wednesday, I was in the Dells, Oregon, the county, the National Association of Counties Rural Energy Peer Exchange. It's very interesting. There was twenty-five of us from across the country, some from Iowa, there's two of us from Iowa, some from Washington, some from Arizona, some from Nevada. It was a lot of good discussion, looking at how wind and solar and hydroelectric and data centers have really changed their county. They're not able to grow anything up there. They only get seven inches of rain a year. So it's been very beneficial to them. Only seven inches of rain a year. They get no snow. They don't get anything because of the rain shadows from the cascade volcano rain. So very interesting talking with them, gave me some ideas for some future ordinance, possibly some future agreements that could be made with different companies so that we could get a better benefit for our county. That's all I have, besides the compliment.
Mr. Crouch? I had several meetings last week. One of the first ones was an emergency management meeting. Where we discussed budget and stuff coming up for the future year here. Not much change in it. In fact, it went down some. We did have some people that was questioning, being Travis moved, Patrick came from down there to here, Travis went from here to there. Travis took over the buildings, facility, paying the lights, the gas, so on, taking care of that part of it. And two or three board members, the board members thought that it should be broken up in seven entities that are there. And I just said, folks, does it really matter whether county money is in this budget or if it's spread amongst all of them? I said, we're trying to cut this down so that it's a lot easier to keep track of, and they growled some and... But that was one of the main issues they talked about, and then we also helped build the building for the school, set it clear back against the railroad tracks. And we keep losing space and keep getting things set outside. They keep taking more, so we're going to talk to the county engineer and see if there's any way we could put a building, you could add on to the free cargo rods that's there, we're building up to store some of our products in then. Had a meeting with GRC. We're having very good luck with the people that are selling products for us up there. It's being just turned over to us. It's up to us to get rid of some things. We've had some very interesting products being moved out. The generator that went out of town the other day, I saw it on the truck and I'm going, boy, that is, I mean, when you saw it, you're going, that couldn't generate electricity. I mean, it just absolutely, the way it was designed, but we got rid of most of the power plant. It had some excess fuel and things like that. But we're, we're making progress, folks, and it's just gonna take time, and time sometimes doesn't always work with people. So another meeting I had was with SWIPCO. There'll be no changes in our fees or anything to them. It will be all the same as last year. And we got approved for an eight million dollar grant, build a building in council bus to house buses and things there. We're setting that. Everything has to be taken down to ground level, and all the old concrete has to be taken out, redone, reformed. So it's a little more expensive than wanted to spend, but that's where we are on that. So I hope.
Jacob, you're traveling late today.
I am. Final discussion items, H-12, hopefully to be out there today, finish it tomorrow, the shoulder ring. Very good, obviously, complete. Still trying to manage expectations on the H-12 gravel. You know, I have someone who's up to you, so appreciate you forwarding that on to me as well. And then I just kind of explain to them, you know, our priorities, you know, when the gravel enters and that. We do still recognize, you know, it's a pretty major round to be able to get cleaned up, and then had a nice email come back in after that, you know, group, thanking us, thanking the guys, so that was good. Conference, insurance conferences last week, Kevin and I attended out of our office. Good conference. Some of the good things were roundtable discussions and just kind of talking with the other counties, how they kind of handle things, simply the views, just kind of different things like that with consent management as well. Also at the conference, I think Kevin was in here, asked for the road groom, road groom equipment, to tow behind a pickup or tractor, basically a series of blades breaks the road out for you. I think it has a use for it, so kind of looking at that, but I wanted to talk to some other counties that actually have it and see what they're at. They did offer us the roof show and offer us that they're willing to split it across different budgets or even supply it with this now or if used to spring, when you pay for it out of this budget. So something we're kind of looking at, also kind of determined for, you know, would, look at the budget too, through the numbers, kind of fantasy, but also. The good thing about that, these equipment is you could just tow it, go. So.
For a pickup?
You pull down a pickup or a tractor, and really what's kind of stand out to me is that, you know, like we had some traders that were out for injuries or something like that. With this, you can use anybody that don't have to be a skilled operator, you can be a truck driver, not with a truck, you know. I think they said you can do like seventy mile lane miles, so thirty-five miles road alone. I think that's quite a bit, but you can take out half that, forty miles. It, it's more of a maintenance, you work with it, but your lane is a rock back on beautiful, across the road and get out some ripples, especially we have. Something we're looking at. Kind of what we got going through here in the winter in the office, our new tech, and then also just those two trainings we'll have going on. I think that's training next week, January, tech a little certain, you know, it's certain classes. Also in January, Dick Vance and I are going to take a federal aid seminar, going to get him on design for M-16 project that's coming up in a year. That'll be his first big design, his federal aids, he'll throw a boot, so training on that, just make sure. He's excited to get started on that, we thought it could happen. And then also what we're looking at is kind of going through some of the ordinances that pertain to our office and just going through and seeing if there's any changes we need to make. And then if there are, obviously we're the county attorney's office and guys and follow that whole procedure, but it'll work for us to get some of that wording updated.
He was brought that up to you, having a little process going through, like you could put something like that.
Specifically for the subdivision ordinance, allowing private roads, like that, design criteria.
Kind of what we got going on down there. Anything for me?
Nothing. Did the school ever contact you?
They emailed me yesterday, so I'll get in touch with them today, but it looks like I'm gonna have to leave.
I, you know, they weren't at our meeting when we had our snow meeting and stuff, and I don't know, I think Frank, yeah, I don't know whether Frank was gone or just what. But we was on pickup, snow pickup, snow emergency routes and stuff, and it makes it awful tough for parents. It's gotta be at work at a certain time and...
And they don't pay for out snow, they'll be for three days after. Sure a lot.
Well, Monday, Monday through Friday, we ran an emergency pickup. And I ran into the superintendent. I says, have you called and talked to the county engineer? Do you, you know, we can, we can help with a lot of these spots that you can't get through. We can. I called Mark McBay the morning before, and I said, Mark, there's three places we need blading done. One of them was right out here, one off of Ingram. Yeah, I mean, they have a solid snow path. I mean, there was people calling me and says, hey, we can slide right out into pavement. And we cleared it, and then most of the blade guys come along, and I call it just chip blading, or they just moved enough rock to get the ice and stuff in places taken care of. And, but nobody's called here, anything.
I've had any discussions with them, so I see, you know, but I haven't yet.
Yes, because I talked to her on Wednesday of last week, and she says, well, I didn't know I could, you've done this past, you know. If they needed help, you know, in some places.
Right, we, we hit it all, and then if there's some places that have...
Yeah.
That there's those specific areas too, so I don't know if those some of that, but I mean, I drove gravel roads, and I was funny, I know it's different than bus, so if you get to talk to them to see what they're actually concerned, or if they were in isolated spots.
Well, that's what I was trying to get out of her, and she says, I don't know, we just, we just can't get around with the buses. We want, well, the idea is, you know, these parents, a lot of them, like I say, have to be at work at a certain time. They have, they don't get home at four o'clock in the afternoon either, you know, pick up their kids.
But yeah, the title of the email was coming, which had everything, so must be about, okay.
Thank you.
Anything else for Jake?
All I had to say is that I got a few phone calls, a few emails from the people who lived along gravel route of H-12, and they, that's the kind of thing, so they have that.
Yeah, we're gonna pull through it, and we'll get it sealed up this next summer.
Actually, oh, yes.
Yeah. Thank you, sir.
Right, thank you all.
Big and major consideration, formal action, the sketch plan application during here.
Much. Thank you. And I was like, I need it.
Uh, much thank you guys, letter in your packets. We have a property down, it's kind of paint out near PJ. When it was originally, the sketch application was released submitted back in twenty sixteen. It was supposed to attach to a property next to it because it was too, didn't have enough frontage width, so we have a three hundred foot requirement in our subdivision ordinance for lots without... for lots without public sewer and water.
Okay, it is the good.
So what happened was the parcel on the right is the one in question. It was sold in like March of 2021 and it was just sold as that property because the property to the west was being sold to the county during the flood buyout. The way it was split was some of that property to the west was to attach to property to the east, which can no longer happen now that the county helped it, we had the flood buyout. So the current property owner wasn't aware, he bought it on contract. So when that happens, we don't do the actual split until the contract's complete, so it actually transfers to him. So this kind of got discovered this year when the contract was completed. He's already, yeah, he's already gone ahead and built two homes on there to sell. And in speaking with county attorney, with Jake County Engineer's Office, really it was kind of that three hundred foot was kind of part of the driveway ordinance, but they changed, they've amended some of that in the last couple of years. So in talking to Jake, he has no issues with it being less than, I think it'll be like two hundred, roughly two hundred and thirty, I think, for one parcel and about a hundred and eighty-eight for the other.
But they still need the acres.
Yes, that means, that means every other requirement of our subdivision ordinance other than that, yes, that, that block width. So the depth, the setbacks, the acreage requirement, everything is there. One part, one parcel will be about four acres, the other will be three, so our requirement's two without city and waters, without, I'm sorry, without city sewer and water, so.
So we just need approval of the variance for the sketch, but.
Yes, sir.
We finish them.
I'd make a motion to approve the variance for the sketch pad application at this location. Put that in minutes so we know where we're at and it's basically due to driveway separation, you know, on the front. Seem that the engineer is fine with it, I think we're fine with it.
It's pretty flat, so.
Yeah.
No site distance issues down there?
Second to motion.
We have a most and a second to approve the sketch but application variance for.
Parcel number. One, seven, seven, eight, eight, Kane.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much.
Thank you, Morgan.
We're getting vegan. I was looking at Amber, it's like a bit vegan in her office. Are you, Mr. Schultz?
How are you guys?
Memo of understanding for empty shifts.
I think you guys have this in your packet. Thank you for coming on. Yep, so we've been talking about this a while back, just in effort to try and get more depth on the road as we kind of give it time and then also to adjust their schedule. It's in the ten hour, nine hour shift. It is a good opportunity to have regular days off because it should be sixty days we set. So yeah, basically we're eight out of the two week days of the two week period, so just to get their eighty hours in a week, it gives us a lot of lap.
Do we have to run this through the union or have you already or?
Yeah, I've ventured everything. It all started with Mike Galloway.
Good, good.
Then we're revisions.
I'll make a motion to approve and then.
We have a most and a second to approve the memo of understanding for empty shifts. Is there any discussion? Hearing that all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Any discussion?
Uh, just a couple of things. I mentioned last week, we went down to the years next association, their school last week, very good. We had a couple fantastic presentations, including parachute. Learned a lot from inside bodywork mechanics, something surrounding campuses. Put together by in-starter, just sort of, certainly, or as not. Obviously, you can't work for a plan like that, work on a plan on debt, very soft, because you can't. That's our plan, the, the winter break or the Christmas break. Other than that, I don't have anything else. Any questions?
Nothing for you, sir.
All right.
Thank you. Good rast, sir. Considerate, formal actions, no removal and lock here, bids, let's get it all, apples for apples.
I think so, I think so. I contacted a couple of the other guys and had them be high level, so. Got actually three different bids. I got another one from H12. By the time I didn't understand, I didn't realize they had, I was understanding that roads, roads were wrong when they went wrong, like Thursday afternoon. Found out they did, but so I got one, but I just don't have roads. I put it into his bid with his bid. This bowling, but the other two did resubmit their bids again with the roads included in this folder, so. There's no removal. Foose's was one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars per removal. He can't, like he said, and Sharp Wolf said they can't really give a yearly estimate on it because we don't know how much time it's gonna snow.
Right.
They just don't know. That was including ice and mountain as well in with, when they scoop the shovel off the box.
Did, did, did the sheriff please give you a per?
So Sharp's no removal was depending on inches wise, zero three is nine sixty-five removal for all buildings with ice included. Three to six inches is one thousand two hundred and twenty-five with ice included as well and six to nine inches was one thousand four eighty-five. With ice and everything. So all together with all three of them, it was, and he's got tax in here, which I hadn't taken out, but it was at three thousand nine hundred and thirty-two fifty-five, so.
How much was it for three to six again?
Three to six was one thousand two twenty-five.
Yeah, six or nine.
It was one thousand four hundred and eighty-five.
Foose's just eleven fifty per.
Uh, Foose had looked at you, probably didn't have inches on here, inch on ends.
Well, let's make connection on our snow first if we could, guys. Do these separately, Amber, is that all right? What do you think, gentlemen? Foose did not bid snow.
He did bid snow just for the courthouse. He doesn't have a machine that'll do like parking lots.
Okay.
He can just do sidewalks, so.
Okay. You need them to do it all?
Yeah, yeah, we need to do it all.
Yeah, okay.
So we're down to Sharp Blades and.
Sharp Blades and Foose. Foose is eleven fifty per, Sharp Blades is nine sixty-five to fourteen eighty-five within the year.
Make motion to accept the bid from Foose for eleven fifty per removal.
Yeah.
We have a most and a second to approve this Matt Foose or Foose, Matt Foose company?
Yeah, that's what he has on here.
Matt Foose company. For eleven fifty per snow removal, this is for this snow year that we're in now, correct, when you're contracted. Is there any discussion? Hearing that all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now let's go to lawn.
Okay, um, so the lawn have three different bids on that one. So they, like I said, it was understanding that roads did their own, but they have found out that they do not, so. Sharp Blades did resubmit mowing. It was all together. It was the veterans affairs, courthouse, sheriff's department, the annex building and roads. It's still a bid for the year, that's twenty-five times, twenty-five times throughout summer, depending on growth, but it was twelve thousand eight hundred and forty.
Twenty-five times?
Yeah.
Okay, and pretty sure there'll be no, no mowing at the veterans building?
Probably not, yeah.
Just so, just so.
Yeah, well, same page, I think it's planned as the eventually, yeah. So it's included just in case we haven't sold the property or until we do sell it.
But that includes the lawn here?
In here, yes.
Engineer's office?
Yep.
Public health?
Yep.
Sure.
Yes. Foose has been on mowing was he did not get back to me with the county roads included. Again, when I figured his out, but twenty-five, only twenty, you know, everybody twenty-five times, same deal, he was around nineteen thousand, so it's gone.
And.
Foose's is, again, they didn't have the, I didn't know about the, I was getting, he didn't get back to me about this. Uh, here, again, most fair within there at that time, public health, sheriff's department, eight thousand two hundred and fifty.
That includes veterans affairs, but not roads.
Right.
We'll give some kind of a trade there, okay?
That's twenty-five times for all of them.
Yeah, it's put this up here.
Good, now we finally seen it all is. Making that move. Great, gentlemen, what do you think?
Do you think the interest would be from Boogie to include the county engineer's building? Because that's just an substantial problem.
Yeah, um, so I'm not.
They're removing veterans affairs.
Yeah, so I'm not real sure after, you know, because I don't know how everybody bids their stuff or thing. Like I say, because the, uh, that, because this is the difference what Sharp jumps his up to and then Matt didn't give me the, what do you want to say, the county either, the county roads, so.
Why don't we do this if we're not mowing right now and we've got the snow taken care of? Why don't you get them to?
I can get them to resubmit them.
Yeah.
Them two, them two guys.
Say we're gonna remove.
I'd rather be fair for everybody, you know.
I agree.
So we see, you know, all the other guys.
I want to see apples for apples, so.
I want that.
We're not gonna mow anytime soon.
No, we got a little bit on the mow.
Right, right, right. Why don't you get back in touch with each of them and then let them know moving forward how we're gonna do it. Back with us.
I can do that.
Right, thank you.
Yep.
Uh, update on the veteran affairs move.
Okay, so we, uh, we've all went down, we've talked, we've looked at the opposite, everybody's checked it, they're all went down, they've looked at everything. We took them boxes so they could put, start putting things in the boxes that they need to put in boxes. Friday, we, uh, Daisy and Patrick went down Friday and we spent Friday afternoon. We have got pretty much ninety-nine percent of Kayla's offices moved over already. They got the power plugs that the plug is put in, needed. Patrick Stace got the computer, you know, hard drive, line ran. So Kayla's office, desk wise, computer wise, it's all in the new office already.
Okay.
Um, we talked to the ship ladies and we talked to Ben. They are okay with, ship said they, they're okay with staying in that office, the office they're in, Ben's okay with sitting in the middle. And then both people said if they were in the middle office, they don't need a window. They said they're fine because they're gonna look out, but they don't have a wall. So let's worry about that, that's there, that's, that's fine. Um, so we got labs to do, they're gonna try to catch Ben this week here and get his office moved to the center. And then I've got, we got a couple of bottom cabinets in that middle storage area we're gonna get out. And other than that, I have two bids for two different moving companies that they have presented to us. And first one is a ten man movers. So, yep, ten, ten movers. Their first, their total bid is four thousand, two thousand down and two thousand at completion.
Four thousand total?
Four thousand total. The other bid I got was from Easy S Pie Moving. And their total bid, I've read this two or twice and it shows that their total bid is two thousand one hundred and thirty-nine.
Each of them can move when we're.
They, yeah, they said, once you guys are moved, we will, and we're sure we're gonna move, I sent, told them right now, it was fourteenth, fifteenth of January, we'll be all discussed.
Sure.
And as soon as we know, we're letting whoever gets the bid know and they will have a schedule, so that takes our schedule too.
Pretty good. And, you know, uh, the main thing with veterans, they wanted to know, you know, a couple of days in advance, put up notices, put out everything on the county website and saying, hey, we'll be closed these two days, open for business the following, or comes up Monday or Wednesday, we'll come up to, but, you know.
And both moving companies said that they will disassemble the desk, reassemble them, we'll keep them at, so that's the good thing, I feel like we're about taking our parts there, so they will disassemble and reassemble them.
I would make a bush.
A bush?
I'll make a bush. To accept bid of twenty-one thirty-nine for the moving process of veterans affairs. And are they gonna help any with public health? Public health probably already done and stuff.
Yeah, it'll be done, yeah, yeah.
Checking for sure.
We're almost, we're, we're almost there. We've got a few more cabinets to move out of places and I think Ben's office, we're gonna have one of the ladies use that desk, why, perhaps it's some of that whole desk in, put it somewhere, because we don't need that desk.
And I believe we can remove that, it's a film on that window.
Yeah, we were looking at that the other day.
And already you have to heat it to remove it or if you have to scrape it down.
Yeah, I'll look more into that and yeah, we're looking, we were looking at that and discussing about that.
And then I know we had talked about moving the door from one end of the hall to the other.
Okay, so we, uh, that's good, glad you brought that up. So we discussed on that too. So the bathrooms that are uh, handicap accessible are all be in the same boat as we are now if we move the door. Talked to Bu, the lady, you know, and the idea is just to get rid of the door, period. That way, because people come in to the zoning area and are supposed to go public out and they end up walking down the lock. What is the thought? Could just remove the door? Because everybody down there locks their own offices when they're leaving, everybody does, so. I mean, what's the thought? Then just get rid of the door so people have, if they do come in, they can just go back right down the hall.
The only reason that it was left there like it is, we have meetings in the large meeting room and stuff. So they, they can get to the bathroom, that door there kept everybody out of public health and whatever else.
Right.
Have you talked to the VA about that?
We're going, I was going to, I haven't yet talked to them yet. And I know they were, they were saying it's because of files or something, files were out, cabinets, but I don't, there is no cabinet, it's gonna be, it'll be an obstacle.
Make sure you approve of the.
Okay, they will, yeah.
The Easy S Pie, I assume that they have insurance if something goes wrong?
Yeah, but their license, both of them have their license insured, everything, they go across state line.
Okay. My second motion.
What'd you call Easy S Pie?
Easy S Pie, that's another company.
She's got a free pie.
I was, I don't know, I'd like to play to me, to think I ask.
Get you a pie for Christmas, honey.
What's that? What's that?
Get your pie for Christmas.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Hey, I'm gonna make sure that I get one, you said it, right here at the meeting.
He did, not me.
You gotta eat it here.
You have to share. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It just makes you, makes you stay on the same page with both.
Yeah, I know, we're talking with both the ladies altogether.
They need the door locked, then we gotta keep one there.
Well, all right.
Thank you so much for all your casing around.
Yes.
What's that you out there?
Thanks.
It's working out, good move. Uh, Amber Farm and Consideration Formal Act and Family Farm Credit Applications for Assessment Year Two Thousand Twenty-Five.
I emailed those to you last week, so I just need to act on it along with not to approve them. There were two in question that were not recommended for the Assessor's Office, so I'll just let me know if we'll approve those or not. Or just the ones that are already recommended. If they're not in your packet, I emailed that.
Okay, yeah.
Which, which two? No.
I just printed that pre-talked about, oh my. It's just one page.
I really thought there would be more.
Yeah.
It doesn't sound over here. Cause you don't have to reapprove or reapply, so. I did double check to make sure that's on.
Where is it, but you can hear?
Yeah, those are the two.
Recommended, no, why would we?
She just said that it was up to the board to decide if they wanted to approve outside of those. I emailed the assessor, she said that between the, uh, family farms, which is why they weren't signed, gonna be up to you as well, that's true. Buckingham has just met with the board review and Horace. Has something going on with that.
Six, 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 this is the worst one.
And one of those properties are actually residential, so it did prevent that, they removed them.
It's Horace, that's up on two hundred thirtieth, right?
Yeah. Let's see.
Yeah.
That was recommended, no?
Cause at one point they. But they, they had something filed with the Assessor's Office.
Yeah.
But they have the other two.
The other two, all, all three are just.
I think their biggest swabble is that they were paying so much on the house and then last year. They threw all this land and stuff with it and increased the.
Presidential.
Residential, you know, and they're. Going to Pam to see if they can get this changed and I think they're in. They litigation, we can't really change.
I agree.
Gotta make it sound.
It is for me on this one.
And they are, uh.
There was a note on that one that said that they weren't sure who was farming it.
No. It's the second time.
Farming it or let me shadow, saw the ground.
The note just said, unknown who's farming this.
Yeah.
Really care who's farming it?
It has to be a family, it has to be like family farm.
I'm with you.
So I don't know.
It's good.
Now, they have to be related, something, cousin, nephew, niece.
Whatever, it's a family farm, a stable farm.
Well, I would make a motion to prove. Justin Kaiser, Jeremy and Julian Call, and Paul Hathaway. And Legacy Land and Cattle Company of Wood.
Buckingham, stay and give any verification as to who is farming, get to the Assessor's Office at all.
Okay.
I'm just get the information for the session, I'm not sure what the process is down there. They will have to send a letter out though, once it's, I think, so we make it more information once a little bit of the house.
We, they still, they still got time to come back and do this.
I don't have to permit to label.
Oh, weird fun, yeah.
You wanna have to have it done before I do evaluation. Like I have to have this, this stuff done now, I don't file until April first.
Good. We were motioning a second to approve the Kaiser, Call, Hathaway and Worthman Farms for. Family Farm Credit Applications for Assessment Year Two Thousand Twenty-Five, is there any discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Gary's. Mr. Woods is not in here right now, Mr.?
He's sitting back.
Oh, there he is.
Hiding in the back.
There's his, there's his counterpart, okay, right up there. T-Shaper Extension Agreement.
Yes.
Something I think you've already discussed with, and Richard.
Uh, Matt has, uh, Matt spoke with, uh, DeShawn, Shawn's.
Okay.
On board, is aware of what's going on. Essentially, it's a one-year extension of his soil extraction permits. Currently, what's been approved so far is that it would close the end of this month as far as soil extraction. And then reclamation, it has to be completed by July first. We're asking for a one-year extension, um, for the past four or five years, that cattleman's. Processing plant that was gonna go out there, they've been kind of dangling a carrot in front of Mr. T-Shaper that they're gonna use his dirt. So he's withheld larger projects, uh, thinking that was gonna happen, because to be very cheap for them, use his dirt. He's just right across the street. Um, that's not gonna happen, at least not anytime soon.
Right.
Uh, so we're asking for a one-year extension. Uh, primary reason for it is he was approached by the Iowa DNR to use his soil for the. Wabash Trail, uh, Reclamation, uh, Rehabilitation Project that they're gonna be doing. With that, um, they require certain soil, uh, they had to test the soil, uh, make sure there's no. Flutens or pesticides that would contaminate the area. They tested John Soil, John Soil's perfect for it. Um, that would start March or April, I believe, and then that'll essentially wrap it.
Then he would finish with this conditionally used permit.
Yep.
On extension.
Wrap it up by July, or excuse me, um, December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. And then have it fully reclaimed by July first of twenty twenty-seven. The, um, other stipulations is he has to have. Surveyor come out or, uh, an engineer to, uh, view the property, make sure he's in compliance with the reclamation that was approved. Back in twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen, to make sure he's reclaimed it properly, so it's not gonna cause any issues. Um, and then once he has that, we bring that report through the.
Close it out.
Close it out.
Good. And I do know HGM is doing this surveying and.
Yes.
So, just for that discussion, so. Just extending the agreement we have in place.
One year in, and we said this last time, this will be the last one.
Right.
Uh, that, the cattleman's project's not gonna happen, that's the main reason this has been continued a few times. It's, it's not gonna happen, or if it does happen, it's not gonna happen within the next year.
Yep.
And so he's ready to move on, uh. He doesn't know the exact amount of. The Wabash Trail Project, but he had roughly two hundred fifty, two hundred sixty thousand cubic yards left on his.
Before he can reclaim that, fix up this, this reason for that.
Correct.
Good. All right, what do you think, gentlemen?
I would make a motion that we. Accept the T-Shaper Extension Agreement. Ending date of December twenty twenty-sixth, right?
Yep. December thirty-first for the extraction, then the reclamation July first or twenty-sixth.
There were motioning a second to approve the T-Shaper Extension Agreement, one-year extension. Is there any discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Aye.
It's a six-year, that's not bad.
Thank you.
I will, uh, I'll draft up an agreement, have, uh, DeShawn, uh, sign, and then we'll get a filed report and have the report through.
Okay.
Okay?
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Very much, sir.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Norman, update on the, I went to go on the project.
Morning.
Who are you?
By the ass. Don't know, I have a pool out of the day, but I did wanna make sure I came in, got you enough days before the holidays. Kind of stuck out with, uh, project cost, which is, which is. Uh, and their main focus right now is really just wrapping up. So, gonna call with them, leave this out, should have a big, but. And once that's done, I manage sometime after the first of the year, probably start. Figure out habits of, I guess it lasts, I mean, a lot of stuff that has fall placed, they work, none of it easy, uh, but, but. Continuing, I think they, they might, they want to try.
Good.
So, so. Uh, I've got a couple of business retention, expansion business coming up. Uh, feed energy, uh, so finally got their Chief Administration Officer, gonna be in town next Tuesday, but Gypsy and higher gonna be. But talk about the project, I assume, to continue to help other opportunities are growth. And then also look at being on the, actually. Three, Thursday, uh, one of them, so, anyway, just had an opportunity to discuss with them and how it is. It's on issues. Just a little, have to use the county help.
Good, good.
Um, easy way, I mean, continuing to, to talk with him, I don't anticipate any construction happening this year. To, to, to try to figure out, I guess. Checking with, probably twenty twenty-sixth. See, I interviewed, so we're project, Richard and I monitored them. Last week, just got update, and wrapped up their marketing, and, and, East Rock Island. Uh, and, uh, so that's, well, for me, process is done. This area, trying to get this moving forward. Thought I had a grant site plan, maybe by March, June, sometime, and start to get some feedback, cut, talk to the county. So, so, probably late, late. Six, they'll start to have, or navigate, I mean, there's some companies who do any kind of structure. They are talking with, uh.
Yeah, on board.
Yeah, about kind of that area and flood area, what are they gonna do to elevate? Case, so that's, and they can, so. Continuing to move forward there. Project Ohio, which was kind of that landscaping company out of Ohio. To look at the area, kind of submitted some property, uh, north of thirty-four, just one, I mean. I'd close that project, I mean, this is, this one, so. So, and that's kind of how it looks sometimes. Wirey, smooth the information. So, I closed that project out. Project Bowie, it's a project, again, kind of. Raw product, they were doing type of stuff, uh, look at system junction area. Uh, still had a lot of interest in that site, but we're looking to see if they can find a site to the metro, that's where their customers are. And he's mobile, that, that kind of business, and so continuing to talk with them, so. Still hoping that something can happen there, I'm. Uh, we had the project from Ice, yeah, I mentioned that last time, I was here, it's a large plastics, uh, manufacturer. Uh, it needed rail because they can bring in their raw product by rail. Uh, that, that needed, it's a junction area for that. Um, they basically said, I was out, uh, had business out, so looking more in the suburbs. Trojan-based plastics, makes sense for them to be theirselves. But, yeah, kind of learning process for that, but. It was nice to see a project come in from EPA. Had sent some information, you know, highly third floor area to, uh, to the area developer, didn't have really a lot of interest in, so I'm gonna start with this. Start sending information, just, just trying to create interest, to say, hey, we're here. Get hotel discussion, I'm at the Gypsy, who's all. Twenty-third type of hotel, what we can do for that, so start reaching out to hotel, flags, just saying, hey. Yeah, it's a man, yeah, conversation, just trying to, just, just trying to be. You know, out there, it has, well, I do, it continues to move forward, I think that's it, that's the topic. Like I mentioned, the, the project fairland, that we've had that other option, drove us. Good thing, so I wanna kind of take that, virtual shopping site, should have most of the information for that. That would give you hands of that certification. Trusted, sites, good site, all the features there, serve utilities, uh, so bad one, so we think you're gonna be. Successful in tracking something there, go through that process, ask project, then go out, go back to talk to site selectors, so. Make sure that site's. Only other thing, I guess, I'm talking about is Resource Center. And Richard, I mentioned the selling a lot of the stuff. Uh, one of the big things is all the copper that was there, I used to buy iron and all that. We did work with a company in Texas, and they would, and took it off, stripped it off. So all the copper, except for a company that was, he, he's gone, uh, which is a good thing, uh, because that's the thing to be why, right?
So. Less weeks to.
Yeah.
Couple bucks for a break.
Yeah, and it's, uh, and, and there's free campus, a lot of copper, so it was a good thing for us to do that, so. One big thing, and I think it's gonna be in the paper today, is, is the burial site. Request of, like, the law enforcement, that we had to close the area, that's just because there's a lot of people up there, uh, doing things, breaking into things. They're not supposed to, temporarily close that, which is a burial site, it's not cemetery, it's burial site. Into the, uh, Department of Insurance, which regulates secretaries.
I can't believe, it doesn't make sense, you know, I, I don't think the connection.
Doesn't that take a long time?
It's a burial site, I agree.
So cemetery is open to the public, a burial site is. Right. And so it's not open, it's not, anybody can go and get buried there, you can have to be a resident.
Cause that, that was, that was originally set up for the clients. Yes.
It's, it's, it'll carry that way, I believe, there are some clients that are still eligible.
It, it very well could be, I don't know, you know, we don't have a lot of records on that, but, but, uh, so. So, there's some closures, it's definitely. Something. Uh, but basically, that's, as we go through destruction, we'll start to see some of that demolition. We'll start to see some of that demolition occur, probably in spring, uh, some roads will be gone. So it'll be difficult to kind of get up there safe. So once, once we're complete with putting your bad demolition, those artists, it's done, we're opening that back up. So it's not something that we wanted to do, but needed to do, or save. So, so that's, that's in there. The, the, the website for DRC is now up, it's. There's a form there, so if we have a question and comment, that gets sent in. Can you respond to, so that's there. Uh, we have created a by drink many. Couple attendants up there, so. I hate that, Jared, there. Issues on there. Bonding from. To the USU, to new citizens.
Um, Bogisht. Yes, school. Can't think of. That's, so we created that, given, have an opportunity to expand that as we.
So continuing to make progress, our, our master developer is, is working through their process. Gonna create a process for people that are interested in doing something up there. Element houses, I think we have a process in place, so we've got a standardized process of going through the value. Sure, ultimate goal is to maximize the uh. Strong amount of taxes, to all entities. Would you be the fee?
Any new business?
Remember, I didn't pay the most to do adjourn.
Motion to adjourn at nine seventeen. There's a motion to second to adjourn at nine seventeen, all those in favor? Aye. You're adjourned, thank you.